I haven't read the books.
Well, thank you.
How about I'm gonna forward it to the rest of you guys, too?
Um. Yeah, 'cause I mean, it's, it still make any sense. I know we're dumping outside of the district, but it's, or outside of the area, but...
Well, and, um, your change order, is that gonna, that's, are you still wanting them to agree to the whole project amount? Or with, with the, with the construction company, or are you holding off on? 'Cause I, I don't think, and I don't know if Jeff is on or not, but until there's a deed, I don't think they wanna do that.
And that's where, I don't know where Jeff's at as far as if it's just paperwork, or if there's agreements to be made. I would like to be able to at least get materials coming. Um, obviously, we can't start until we have a deed, which we would, we just wouldn't issue a notice to proceed.
Can you get, um, materials with the amount that we have approved right now?
Dollar-wise, it'd be way less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the materials, if something went south with Boyd game...
You don't need those materials if you don't...
We wouldn't need some of them, but we'd, we'd like to get in queue, because these, mainly for the pre-cash, sanitary manholes and storm sewer pipes.
So if you didn't get a deed, how much would you be out just getting materials?
Um, well, we still use half of the sanitary structures. I, I estimated it'd be about two to three, say twenty-five hundred dollars per sanitary manhole to buy them. Obviously, they're good uses elsewhere, if they can do two, but they'd be restocking, see, there's nine of them. Um, so even if at the very least we could get sanitary orders, um, get those, there could be a lot of work done before the storm sewer pipe showed up, 'cause everybody's worried about shutdowns, shutdowns, what happens if they shut down. And as of, I guess, as of right now, what I was told this morning is, um, public works, as well as construction and engineering, is essential. So even if it gets here, as of now, that won't be shut down.
Right.
With, with construction. So the main concern is getting the materials.
Uh, Jeff Greve, are you on the phone by chance?
I don't see him. Should we call him, maybe?
I think you want to.
Yeah, I, I would like his... That's what you said we could call, right?
I wish we could just get on the...
And we don't have the easements yet for the storm sewer, but if, you know, we verbally agreed to it, and if they back out, we go to the other side of the road like we talked, and these same materials will be used there. I looked into that this morning, just to make sure that we wouldn't overbuy anything because of easements and that, that'd be...
Sure.
Hello?
Yeah, Jeff, Ken Avery's here, I got you on speakerphone in the boardroom?
Yeah.
Okay, what, what, the thing is, we're, we're wanna order the material.
Jeff, Jeff, Jason Peterford here. Um, we were talking about the change order and your email last week, and we've got a couple different options. Option one is approve the change order and not issue a notice to proceed, so they couldn't actually physically start construction until such time that the deed was in hand. Option two is to, and that, that would allow us to order materials, get materials come and get the materials built, specifically manholes and concrete pipe. The other option is to just not approve the change order. Um, my concern there is the potential delays in getting materials. So I guess as far as the agreement or the deed is, is it a matter of getting paperwork done at this point, um, to get the deed taken care of, or is, are there negotiations and agreements yet to be made?
No, I, I, I think it's a matter of just completing the paperwork. Uh, and they, they certainly have not given me any indication that they no longer wanna go through with the transaction. But, but my concern is, uh, we can't, you know, if, if you're planning on buying your neighbor's house, you can't very well, you know, contract to, to have it bulldozed down before you actually own it. Um, so if you don't mind running the risk that you're going to end up with extra materials and the cost of the materials, and it may end up falling true, then, then you can certainly assume that risk. But, but I don't know that, you know, the problem is that you really don't want the work taking place until you have the, the deed in hand.
Correct.
So we wouldn't want the full amount of the whole project approved until you actually had a deed, correct?
Well, I, I don't know what the cost of the extra materials are if, you know, the difference between the smaller project and the larger project, which is, you know, the amount of the risk you run that, that this falls through.
Oh, it would be a section manholes, right?
At, at this point, it'd be the materials cost of the manholes.
Right.
It would have to be.
Right.
Which the majority of them could be reused elsewhere, they're restocking, the bases would be different.
Yep.
But what they signed today, will it have that one point six or whatever?
Correct, if the change order's approved, otherwise, we could say, let's just authorize them to order manhole, sanitary manholes, not the storm sewer pipe, you know, that, I guess, that'd get them started.
Yep.
I guess if you guys were comfortable with that until the...
I, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they've, I guess, they've hung in there since last fall when they wanted to start with us, so I, everybody's nervous. We're all hearing about it, I, I'd like to at least get something.
Right.
So we can get...
Project's going ahead.
Yeah, it's going ahead, Curtis. So when's the last time you talked to Boyd and Jeff?
I exchanged emails with them, I think on Friday. And, and at that point, uh, he was getting trying, I, I explained to him our concern with, with ordering parts and, and the, um, supplies, and he was going to try and get it to the Iowa attorneys to review and finalize this week.
So as far as, you're thinking two weeks?
That's, that's...
That's good.
I mean, that, that's like asking me when my father's gonna retire, I, I think it's something I have no control over. Uh, is it, will it be in two weeks, maybe? Um, you know, it could be a, could be a month, it, uh, you know, or it could be tomorrow, I, I don't... And, you know, if, if the supervisors are willing to take the risk, they can certainly, you know, enter into the order. Um, you know, I, I think my, my job is to, is to let them know worst-case scenarios and, uh, try and keep them from making expensive mistakes.
Yeah.
So I, I don't... And I would, I would think, and I, again, this is just so outside my area of expertise, I would think that depending on what gets ordered, that it's, it's something that, uh, if we can't use it, it, there certainly ought to be some kind of salvage cost to selling it, but, so I don't know how much the actual risk is.
I don't think it's very high, Jeff, because these manholes can be used somewhere else.
True, so, you know, as, as long as you realize that there's a, there's a risk that we'll never end up owning the property and, and can't develop it, um, you know, you, you can go ahead and order, order the items, but, but, you know, you have to weigh that risk against the reward of, of not delaying the projects further.
Correct.
Now, you know, one of... I don't know that it's an issue, but, but one of the realities is, is with this, uh, economic downturn that we're dealing with, I don't know that there's gonna be anyone that's, that's interested in building anything in the next three or six months. So I, I don't know.
Well, we got the, we got the contractor needs to be, keep moving forward, that's the problem we have.
Sure.
And I, I think we could go ahead and just order, get the mater, the low cost of the material, what we need, or pre-order, and then leave it at that.
Sure, and I, I don't, again, I don't have a problem with that, I just want you to understand
Yep.
what, what the downside is if, if things go to hell.
I understand.
But I'll, I'll certainly, uh, keep you informed, but when we get things, there'll be, uh, you know, let Jackie know, 'cause we'll need to put them on the, put them on the agenda, so we can, we can get the, uh, contract signed, I think it's gonna be a matter of signing the contract and then, uh, doing the deeds and then recording the plan and...
Correct. Okay, so today's...
With the deed back.
On today's, what kind of a motion can I make, we can go ahead and pre-order the manholes and the storm sewer pipes?
Yes.
Sanitary sewer.
And sanitary sewer. That's, that'll be the only motion I'll make, that we can pre-order this stuff. Mr. Chair, so move, uh, we pre-order the, um, sanitary sewers, the manholes, what needs to be, for the constructions of our project out there.
Okay, there's the motion, there's a second?
I will second it.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing no, in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry, we'll order the necessities to get some sort of our object started.
Order to get started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they can start with the portion we know we're gonna do for sure.
Yep. Well, we do, all the kill be ordered for it.
Yeah. Yeah, we, yeah, the material be ordered, so that when...
Material be ordered.
The rest has come through.
If, if things went south, we'd have to start looking at returning and...
Yep, yep.
Basically, what, what are the costs associated with that, which is...
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. Okay, we're comfortable with that anyways and...
Good, good.
Okay. And that's, uh, nothing's going smoothly.
You wanna just stay on Jeff, or what?
Uh, if, if there's something you need me for, I sure can, but...
No, okay, well, if we need to get, we'll call you back.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Take care, bye-bye.
Um, now, we have possible close session, do we have any reason to do that, for any, everybody's up to speed with where we're at?
It's just a matter of getting paperwork done right now, as far as I know, which I've got the easements ready, I just haven't hit send to them yet, I will.
Okay.
We've got an agreement, we just need to get the final paperwork before we can, okay, perfect, we'll leave it at that, then?
Should I leave that on there, just in case?
Yeah, I'll let you know, I'm hoping this week we can get some signatures.
As an oath, they can do.
We'll have to say something this week, and everybody's quarantined, they don't know what's going on.
Okay. Perfect, any other questions for me?
No.
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Money-wise, we know where we're at, Joe's working on his end.
Yep.
Do you wanna talk to Joe, or not at this point?
I talked to him Friday.
Yeah, I do.
And you had talked to him, and he was comfortable with where it was going, he just wanted you to be aware of where we're at money-wise, which I told him I'd, I'd bring it up, I, they were, you know, here's where they're at, so. And as far as that extra storm sewer pipe, you're gonna work through that, whether you wanna pay for it out of a different fund, or...
We'll have to, we'll have to look into that, I guess, and see if we're gonna do it, or how we can do it, so.
Everybody's up to speed.
So you can help development, we should be able to check it somewhere.
Well, and Jo, Joseph, hanging on the bottom counsel, some of them will let you pay for it, since it's serving the area.
Yeah.
And some won't, and I didn't read all the way through those emails to see what Bob Justin said, but he said Bob's the one that typically lets you, um, sort of, lets you do that, so. But he was probably about to fly, but the office was shut because of...
Just, just the, just the land, that, that, the land wasn't included in the area, in the...
Right.
Yeah, they go, they go, or something.
No. Uh, I guess, yeah, a little more, stick a lot of, uh... All, all, all I ask, they may give us a, 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 something, maybe, maybe, let us help, help.
No, salary, if they did have to switch here, I mean, we're all open, it's all, but if they did, wouldn't they need it, would they?
Not, not forty-two, but I'm looking at forty-two, then if the Canada for the planes done this spring, or this is not paying expenses and...
What do you, that, uh, three, the whole structure again, three, the three, you've always twenty years, ten, two years, ten, oh, potentially, you'll have it there.
Potentially, it's just a matter of, I mean, you wanna do it now, you wanna do it later, and then the motion right now.
I'm saying do it all right now. Because they, they, they keep it, right?
Right.
No.
All, all that, um, thought to, uh, the pre-cash manufacturer, two of their options are...
Okay.
And I'll send an email out to somebody who's...
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Um, people service, order in Lake Water.
Melissa is here, if you want an update from her, I don't know, she wanted to talk or not, but she'll be texting me to say that she's in the loop.
Okay.
Um, this phone's not on mute.
Well, it's...
Go ahead, what's up? Okay, go ahead. I just wanted to let you know that, uh, um, oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we got you in here.
Okay, um, the economic involvement, state representation has, I mean, updates almost three times a day, but the Small Business Association issued a disaster declaration, and, um, the declaration of pandemic impacted small businesses to apply for interest in Portland. So if anybody asks about that, you can just drop it to me.
Sure. Uh, anybody need a little assistance, small business, why did you get through it, just now?
Yep.
Okay, perfect, appreciate that.
Yep.
There you go.
Nope.
Okay, well, thank you, and, uh, lay low.
All right, you do.
Bye. Uh, people service, Chris Myers, are you online, might answer, if you already have anything? I think there's no?
I see way below this point.
Yeah, we...
Oh, okay. Somebody else, somebody else is on the call.
Thank you, Jason.
All right, uh, people service, another option, Judy Stevens from the State Department's office, request for residence, request in writing, homestead credit, I O code four twenty-five point two.
Hey, AJ.
That is due... Yeah?
Uh, your audio is really messed up, if you guys could hang up the phone and try dialing back in again?
Okay.
Do you want me to switch phone numbers or something, or just put the same one?
Let's, let's try a different phone number, it sounds like this one's getting bogged down, I suppose everybody is having a meeting this morning in the world, so that could be part of our issue.
Okay, I'll try, I'll try the other one, thank you.
Thank you.
Joel, can you hear us now?
I can, let's, let's try this line and see how it goes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Looking for AJ to come back.
You have to figure out.
I think it's better that...
Okay.
The question is due to us, you know, the courthouse being closed to the public, um, and something has to be approved, and then to have the capability for people to send in writing to be, you know, approved for home state credit. That is, to come in and sign a paper.
Could Judy speak up, please?
Yes. You want me to start over?
Yes.
I can do that, um, due to the, um, closing the public, you know, to the courthouse, uh, this resolution would give the taxpayer the capability to send in, in writing, um, their request for homestead credits. And that has to come through, through the supervisors.
Okay. Sounds good, um...
Is that a new process, or?
No.
Just because of this virus?
I, yes, I, just the capability, um, we just found out about a week ago that there is something in the Iowa code, four twenty-five, four twenty-two, um, that the board of supervisors have to approve that.
So, do we...
And so what's your resolution? 'Cause I, I didn't get any writing for a resolution.
Yeah.
This is just discussion, right?
I was just supposed to bring it to the board of supervisors.
Yeah.
And I, I, I printed off the code.
Yeah.
Does your affiliate have, have text for that or something, and you don't just move resolutions off?
Yeah, did it, did it get anything that go off?
No, no, so I don't know if others boards, if you guys, I, I don't know.
Well, I'll just put it on the next week to come for the resolution, now we can do it through next week.
Okay.
See if we can find something, so we can actually put a resolution out.
And the whole best next week, yeah. That's good.
Okay.
Okay.
That'd be the same on the flu?
Well, the flu is, is kind of a, um, gonna be an ongoing, um, discussion, I think. Um, we just, also, there is, there should be a letter sent to the, uh, party that wanted to put some wet pavement into flu, and you guys denied that, and we need to send them a denial letter, and that comes from you guys also.
How long ago did that happen?
We didn't actually, we didn't actually make a motion on the resolution.
Looked at it, yeah, discussed it, yeah, we discussed it, we, we need to bring that up, um, a resolution on that as well, to say that we, so that would be, that would basically mean the one, the one instance is being denied, and everybody, also in the future, would be denied that possibility as well.
Yes.
That's what that resolution...
And we do have some overlap out there now, currently.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, we'll, we'd have to look and see if we can find some writing on that, too, for a resolution saying that, uh, flu cannot be in with wetland scrap.
Correct.
Okay, well, I mean, like, we, something we need to probably, yeah, we've looked at it, and if we're gonna make it accounting-wise thing, that's what it needs to be, so.
Yep.
We'll have to do some research and try to find some writing on that, so we can bring it back next week and maybe have the resolutions.
Okay.
That sound good?
Yep, sounds fine to me.
Well, I know you're right, so we're not...
Yeah.
Losing tax dollars, and giving stuff away, and...
Yep.
Okay, anything else for me?
Nope, don't believe so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Are there any reports?
No, but I did have, I missed the payroll again.
Yep. Uh...
I will make a motion to approve the payroll claims.
Motion to approve payroll claims?
Second.
And a second, any other discussion? Hearing no, in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry. All right, payroll eligibility, your salary changes?
Nope.
End of the law enforcement agreements, I haven't heard anything out of Manley, I don't know if they have time this week, I know they're limited on being open, but I think they're there, so I'll call them, see what's going on. Uh, discussion on county capital projects, believe that's just the, on there, pass on that.
Yep.
Um, department heads.
I do have the first, um, group chat question.
Okay.
Reese is wondering from the reporter's office, is, um, if employees have no daycare, et cetera, are they to use sick time or vacation? I personally feel this is a national issue, and they shouldn't have to use sick time vacation. Our budgets have their salaries figured, so I feel we just pay them and take one day at a time, can we get clarification on this issue? I don't know if you guys wanna decide yet, but I think we should at least be track, you know, allowing it, but tracking it at this time, but I don't know what you're gonna wanna use, I mean, if, if the governor has decided that you can do it, I, I, I'm not really sure. There's been so many emails that I'm not sure, but you don't want any, any abuse of it either.
No, right.
I know there was discussion on possibly getting reimbursement for sick time used or whatever, but from the statewide thing, so...
But it definitely needs to be tracked separate, and I think we need to know what, what it's, what somebody's out for. If it's because they're being quarantined, because they were somewhere, if, all the different things that Jessica's told us, I think we need to break it out and keep track of it carefully, so that if there is money available, that we can get it.
Yeah, really, yeah, and that's where we have to keep track separate, just like any FEMA project, or natural disaster, keep track of that, so we can go back and try to recoup.
And whoever, whoever can chime, wants to chime in on this.
Yeah, you guys call up.
Oh, and you guys, um, see that little chat?
Yes.
Click on that, and you can see what people are chatting.
Got it.
Otherwise, I guess, if you wanna discuss something, uh, guys, put it on the chat, so we can see it, and then we can address you, so we don't have forty people trying to talk at the same time. Otherwise, I'm kinda just gonna, I think, walk through you guys one by one, uh, from what I can see, and if we have a little discussion, uh, fine, if you have nothing, I guess we'll go that route. Dan, Sheriff, thank you there.
Just got unmute.
Yep, I'm here.
Cat?
Um...
Um...
Go ahead, AJ.
So what, what's going on, do you have any issues with your departments, everything running as smooth as it can for what's going on?
Uh, everything's running as smooth as it can, um, the staff is doing a fantastic job, I'm very proud of them. As far as, you know, we had the question yesterday from Jackie, my dispatch center at this time is not overloaded at one bit, could it get there? Yes, absolutely. Um, so we're doing good... So we're doing good on that. We are fielding calls and getting them to the right direction. So at this time, we are doing good. I still have just the one on quarantine. So, um, I have no issues at this time. The only question I have is the governor put into the effect of not leaving the state. We have a, kind of a weird situation. A lot of, we have a lot of employees that shop in Albert Lee and that. I'm just wondering, uh, how we're gonna address that. I'll mute off unless anybody has questions.
Okay, well, glad to hear it's going as smooth as it can, so. Um, Mark Thomason.
Or Jessica.
First of all, just to answer the sheriff's question about that shopping in Albert Lee and stuff, there was mention about if the, just the casual travel or just the, the brief travel across state lines. Maybe they, they live or, or work across county or state lines, which basically would be almost like county lines for us. They're not too concerned about that. They understand that, especially the contiguous counties to the states, that that does happen a lot. What they're looking at is if you traveled like into New York City area or into like maybe downtown Minneapolis or something like that on a regular basis. Like that. If you just go to Albert Lee, actually, Freeborn County has, uh, no cases right now. Where Sir Gordon County has two confirmed cases. So theoretically or statistically, you would be safer to go to Albert Lee than you would be to Mason City. But, so, I wouldn't put too much concern onto that part of it. Um, in the MA office, currently, uh, doing a lot of work trying to track down courses of personal protective equipment for the first responders and stuff like that. I, we did have a, a care center that had an urgent need last week. Uh, was able to source locally through donations, some to, to buy them time through the weekend. And then, uh, did get a delivery yesterday from, uh, Iowa Department of Public Health. They were able to get, uh, I think a total of sixty-eight isolation gallons to help. They had a patient that had influenza A, of all things, that they needed to have in isolation. And so to keep from that spreading throughout their facility, they needed to have isolation precautions. I do have a, another request in for more personal protective equipment for the first responders and that is being processed right now. I also have, uh, it's arriving anytime, anywhere from, uh, I think the earliest summer it will arrive is March twenty-sixth to March thirty-first. Surgical masks and safety glasses and maybe some more, um, isolation gowns that I've been able to source off of Amazon, of all places. But, uh, and those will be, most of them will be coming sometime in the month of, uh, April. Hopefully, we can get here soon enough. Between that and what I requested from, uh, Iowa Public Health.
Hey, Mark?
Yes.
I know this isn't really pertinent, but are you going through Joel's business account so that you're not getting charged tax?
I, I have my Amazon account and I do have a tax exemption on that one.
Thank you.
Yep. Um. The other thing we're doing is, is trying to push out the information, the ever-changing information recommendations from public health. Jessica's doing a, a good job of keeping that up. I'm trying to get that information out to the first responder. She's doing a good job of getting it out to the, the county employees and stuff and I push it from there out further. Probably one of the things that, you know, you know, this, the COVID, uh, the infection is gonna affect us a little bit in personnel and stuff like that, but the economic thing is gonna be the big thing for the county and, and how it's gonna affect all of our businesses, big and small, to a point. And I, you know, I think we're probably gonna have to, as a county, look at, you know, right now Melissa said she's gonna help with the small business administration loans and stuff like that. And, but we may even want to look and consider some sort of an economic recovery person. I, right now, it's, it's really hard for me to focus on both things. I need to focus on the response and, and kind of keeping the county prepared for that, that aspect and then to, to focus on the recovery part of it, which the recovery does start as soon as the disaster starts too. But for one person to focus on both things is, is pretty daunting, actually. So, um, I'm glad Melissa's kind of willing to, to take up that, the recovery part of, with the small business loans and, and stuff like that. And until more comes out, there's really not much, but I think long-term, that's gonna be, you know, the, the vaccines will come and the, the treatments and stuff like that will come and, and that will run its course. But the economic part is what's gonna take the long term. If anybody has any question or comments, I guess, we'll shut up now.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Um, Jessica Ryerson, are you on the phone? You may have to unmute if you are there.
Can you hear me?
I got you now.
Okay, good. Yeah. I just wanted to touch a little bit more on the recommendations that I sent out yesterday from IDPH. So their recommendation is the fourteen-day self-isolation for those that have done any business and vacation travel outside of Iowa in the past fourteen days. What they mentioned, we had a webinar yesterday, so what IDPH did say is they're, they're really focusing on any long-distance travel and overnight stays outside of Iowa. And I know, you know, for us, it's tricky because we live so close to the Minnesota border here. And like Mark had said and Dan had mentioned, you know, people run up to Albert Lee for different things. So I did call IDPH last night just to try to get a little bit of clarity, um, on this recommendation. And what they told me last night was that if it's not a work commute or a short routine trip outside of Iowa for groceries or essential needs, then they would recommend fourteen-day self-isolation if it doesn't fall under that. Now, we've had more questions from the public and whatnot since then, so we did contact IDPH again this morning for a little more clarity possibly, but what they basically said is, you know, this is their recommendation and it is, you know, a little bit up to interpretation. So between an employee and an employer, how strict they want to be on the IDPH recommendations. So I just, I know we've had lots of questions and I'm sure, and, and I get that with, you know, the Minnesota being right here, it's kind of tough to distinguish. So I just kind of, hopefully that gives you guys a little bit more clarity on that.
Can I, can I ask one question real quick? And I, and it's probably a dumb question and I probably should not allow it, but we've been trying to get up to Intergrove Heights up in the cities to look at a, at a, at a loader, at a municipality up there. And I think they might be shutting down, but they would open up for us to come look at it. I'm wondering if I shouldn't just hold off on sending one person up there? Would that be considered this traveling thing? And I know it's, I know Minneapolis area is a hotspot, but.
Right.
Think there's gonna be a whole lot of contact, but I just, part of me says we should just hold off and wait. It's not, you know, a piece of equipment isn't that important to somebody's health, but looking at the limited amount of, of contact and I really don't know what to say, but I, I should probably just cancel it. But then I don't know, you know, how long we are before we go back out there again to try to, you know, once this thing settles down, how long that'll be.
Right. I guess if you're able to hold off on it, but like I say, it's kind of just your judgment call in that case. Like, it's just there, the guidance isn't clear-cut, you know?
Right, and that's, you know, we, I've had employees asking me already, you know, well, what is, was classified as out of state? Because heck, I went to Austin Saturday to get groceries because the locals' place didn't have any and it was, you know, pretty calm. But, you know, I did what I could. I think I took wipes with me and wiped down every time I went in and out of a building. But, you know, that's the one question that they had was what classifies it? If they went up to a restaurant while they were still open, you know, a couple of weeks ago, does that still count? Well, I would think that by now they'd probably be showing signs of difficulty. But, um, the definition was, and then, of course, are we, are we considered, I, certain times of the year we're considered essential services, especially during winter, but is secondary roads considered essential, essential services or not? And that's not something you probably can answer, but something that we need to kind of consider.
I would say, uh, yeah, secondary roads is, is infrastructure within our county. So I would say it's an essential service, just as any, any municipality, you know?
Right. No, I just wanted to make sure because I know it's not in the list of things and sometimes we fall into that category and sometimes we have a little bit of, of leniency as to what's really required and what's not, you know? Just trying to consider, we need to be blading roads every day. I know there's limited contact, so we're probably low risk. But, you know, that's just one of those things to try to figure out here with our shops.
Sure. As far as the payload or thing, I would just let it sit for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, the guy just texted me and he wanted to know and I think I might just cancel until this thing kind of blows down, blows away.
Play, play it a week at a time, see what happens. Other than that, Jessica, your full staff, everything going as well as it can?
It's going as well as it can. We were supposed to get a new nurse on board here, but now that they can't, testing's shut down, so we hopefully will get her as soon as possible, but it'll be a while. But yes, we're, we're all, staff is doing great and we're doing what we can.
Okay. Perfect.
Yep. I also want, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to put out there too, um, you know, I know there was a email sent out yesterday regarding how, you know, where to direct the public for, if you guys get questions. So I just wanted to, um, for those of you that weren't aware or whatnot, resources for the public to call with any questions regarding COVID-19 would be two-one-one. And that's a hotline put on by the state. It's twenty-four-seven for any questions. And then there's also the Sarah Gordo Call Center, which is Monday through Friday, eight to four-thirty for any questions that the public might have.
Okay. That's good to know, I guess. We can just pass it on to the people that have more info than we do.
Yep.
Cause I got shared to the county website, Jess.
We have posted that before. Um, we can go ahead and put it on our public health Facebook again and then if Joel can put it on the county.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Jessica, or is that it?
That's it from me.
All right. Well, thank you for all the info you've been sharing with us and trying to keep us in the loop, so.
Yep.
We'll just kind of play it, I think, a day or two at a time and see what happens, so.
Yep, and as I get updated info or changes or something important, I'll be sure and pass it on to you guys.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Um.
Okay. Quit playing around.
Good. I just was gonna look at that chat.
Who's next?
Auditor Teresa, are you on the phone? Or not, auditor recorder, recorder Teresa. You'll have to unmute.
So Teresa is not using a phone. I think she's just using her computer and she doesn't have a microphone.
Okay.
So she can call in on the, uh, on the phone line if she wants to, uh, or else if you guys just want to communicate through the chat.
The chat is, she's recorder two, I see.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, I, I got her on the chat here. I guess we can look at it.
I guess I would say, just my thing would be kind of up to the department heads. You guys know what your workloads are.
Yeah. She had the question of rotating, rotation employees and I know of some other, um, facilities around that actually are doing that so that if there is something happens, they've got a backup plan. But yeah, you guys know your workloads right now and if it is quiet, I guess, um, that's probably not a bad idea to rotate them around.
But keep track of ours, which is why you're doing it.
Yeah, and still keep track of everything. I guess that's the big thing because, like I say, if there's possible for reimbursements on this stuff, we need to try to go after that if we can, if we're able to. So, um, yeah, if, if rotation can be done and your office can still run, that's, that's a great idea. So anyone that wants to do that, um, it's, it's your call, department heads. It's, you guys run the business every day, so. And then I guess also she had a question about gloves, working with documents that coming in from the outside through the mail. I guess if you feel you need some or would like some, we'd probably just have to have you get with Mark Thomason and see if we have some, um, for that purpose.
We can see, to start with, we can see if there's any in the first aid kit up in the hall.
Yep. Otherwise, yeah, I'm sure Mark would have an, a, a resource for that to get them to your office. And then that would, yeah, help with the, the cleanliness and the, keeping everything safe for you guys, so. Uh, Cindy said she didn't have anything. Quarter, who else we got?
AJ?
Yes.
I, I would, I would expect that the sheriff's office has gloves there too if Teresa wants to use those resources.
Okay. That sounds good. Uh, yeah, Mark just put in the one thing he does not have is gloves, so. Uh, maybe check with Dan and see what he's got, as long as he's got enough. Um, I know they're probably using them a lot too, means they're out and about in the public, but maybe he's got a fairly good supply, so maybe just check with Dan.
Uh, our supply is okay. I wouldn't put it over the top because I gotta use that with dealing with the inmates and with the deputies out on the road.
Okay. So. All righty. Um, Jake Hansen, I see is, is he on the phone or is he just on the chat?
He's off now.
Both.
I just unmuted Jake.
I'm here.
Jake, how's it going over there?
Good, good. We got, uh, we got a couple boxes of gloves for the girls, but I, uh, I don't have any that will fit me. So if you have any extra larger, like the larges or extra-larges, you can use that. But otherwise, we're kind of just doing our whole, doing the mail, processing, you know, all the payments that we can. And, uh, we've been getting like title work and stuff through our mail slot when customers want to do it. And so we're, we're still processing stuff and then handing it back through there. So that's kind of where the, the whole gloves thing would come into effect for us. But otherwise, I have, uh, I sent, I sent Callie home, um, for the no daycare thing and just as long as we're able to get by, since she's our DL deputy and there's really nothing driver's license-related you can do now in our office. I just, I'm tracking that and then, uh, yeah, that's, that's about it.
Okay, so that sounds good. Um, yeah, same with you. I mean, if you gotta rotate them or whatever, but just, just document the stuff.
Yep.
Keep, keep track and we're kind of, I think on our end, we're just gonna kind of play it a week at a time with, uh, supervisors. If, if something needs to change, obviously we're here. We can be here whenever we get our twenty-four-hour notice in, so.
Sounds, sounds good.
You have anything else, Jake?
Nope, nothing from me.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Want to send anybody? Jackie?
Um, basically, my office at this point is running as is because there's one person that does each thing. I really don't know what else to do at this point. Claims are gonna be done as of today until the sixth of April, so that's something that we can hold on for a while. Election stuff, um, you know, we're still taking papers. If somebody, somebody wants to run for my, my position, um, sheriff and supervisor for Mark's district. So those you can turn in until Wednesday. Um, you just have to contact me. I guess that's about all I have right now. Just, I just encourage keeping track of payroll very closely because I, I really don't know what we're gonna do with it. I just encourage keeping track of payroll very closely because I, I really don't know what we're going to do with it yet. I wouldn't guaran, I mean, they're still going to get paid, but I wouldn't guarantee people what time we're going to use yet because it's just not really known yet. And no motion has been made to determine anything like that. If we need to do something like that, that might be something for next week or within this week or whatever. I, I'm not sure yet. I think that's it for me.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, everybody?
Randy said that he's starting to get, get busy.
So I think there's all kinds of disposal gloves out there you have to get. You just need a
Sure.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I got a box of them at my shop. I got the nitric gloves.
Yeah, I just was looking on a site that I use and the scissors, it doesn't say they're out of stock, so.
Sure. Harbor Freight would have all kinds of them down there, probably.
They should. I mean, I mean, they're, they're not perfect, their work.
Yeah.
Buy a box and throw them away every time you use them.
Um, Randy, are you on there by chance?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, how's it going down there?
Well, I haven't seen anything slow down yet, so everything is business as usual. Only concern I have is I'm pretty, I pretty much can isolate myself here in the office and watch everybody, but I have one employee and he is off for the virus. So we're going to have to have a backup. Do we move somebody from a different department if I happen to get sick or?
No, I guess.
We should probably try to get somebody that could assist you if that did happen.
Yep. But like I say, I'm taking every precaution. I don't even have to leave the office. I can watch people. I got cameras in here. And if, basically, the only time I have to help anybody is with the older people that, you know, basically can't get out of the car.
Sure.
So. But I was just wondering, we need to come up with a backup plan. I don't plan on getting sick, but.
Have you talked to conservation maybe yet?
No, I probably, I could.
They might have.
Or is Jim on?
Jim Hansen, you on there?
Yeah, I'm on.
What, if, if they did need help, did you have any?
No, we'd, we'd be fine to help cover if he needs help.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. And how about, do you need any gloves or anything like that down there, Randy?
Oh, I got three boxes out here. Mark gave me a long time ago, so I'm set. I got enough gloves, so.
Okay, good deal.
Like I say, I'm, I'm using every precaution, so.
Okay. Well, we appreciate that.
I plan on staying healthy.
That's good. We hope, we hope everybody does it.
Yep, yep.
If you do need something else, contact us, or if you need assistance with, with manbar, I guess, just get ahold of Jim Hansen directly.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Thanks, Randy.
You bet.
Jim Hansen, since you're here, do you have, have anything changing with you or is everything going okay?
Everything's going pretty good for us. We're, we're trying to do business as usual. I guess the big thing is, is that if Randy needs help, it's just a matter of reaching out. If anybody does, I mean, we're more than willing to help spread out our workload and just, it's not a big deal for us, so.
Okay. Well, we appreciate that. I guess we'll leave that up to Randy. If he does need help, he can contact you and, and you guys can work it out. And if anybody else does, yeah, feel free to reach out to us or try to help each other out.
They figure out building access.
Yes, that's the big thing is.
Are we doing any extra disinfecting, cleaning in here in the courthouse, counters or anything like that, any better wipe down? I mean, other than you guys, I mean.
I think everybody's taking care of their own. Yeah. It's a lot easier that way because we know who's in and out and.
Yep. Yep.
I know the carpets were cleaned on Friday.
Everybody see Jessie's message there that says that she can maybe give gloves if we need them? Like I say, I was just on a couple sites. They have big farm sites, but they're those nitro gloves, type of gloves too, and they're available, appears to be available. Doesn't say out of stock, so.
Yep, I guess if anybody does, maybe just, just email Jessica over there, public health, with what you would need and maybe she can put an order together in the next day or two to try to get them coming because it may or may not be a slight delay on that UPS, FedEx-type stuff too, so.
I know I just ordered some a couple of weeks ago and I got them within a couple of days, so.
Okay, good. Is, did I miss anybody out there? Anybody else got any questions? Joel, I guess you kind of know what's going on. You've been dealing with everybody when it comes to the IT stuff. So what's your situation? Are you, I know you're still self-quarantining.
Uh, yep, so because of the governor's new proclamation, and I talked to Jessa, Jesse, we decided that I should probably stay here for one more week. But, you know, if push comes to shove, I have reached out to a couple of the, the other departments I can, and if needed, in, in case of emergency. So please, you know, make sure we're, uh, this worked okay for meetings and stuff. We can certainly use it for other meetings, the Zoom. I will hopefully have the video conferencing camera here this week and I'll probably set that up after hours so I don't have a lot of exposure to anybody. And maybe we'll keep fine-tuning this as we go forward. But so far, I think technology's been working well. We've been posting a lot on the Facebook pages. If somebody wants something on the website itself, we can certainly throw that on there. I did put the alert banner up on the website. So I, I think so far, as far as my department's concerned, I think we're, we're doing pretty well.
Perfect. Yeah, I've, I've seen a lot of your stuff getting posted, getting shared. I guess that's the best way to get it out nowadays, so.
It's the quickest.
Yep, it's working pretty good.
I did see, just can't, closed up all their facilities, so just an FYI.
Okay. I got a message too. They actually, Winnebago, Forest City, shut down production until April twelfth.
Really?
Yep, so.
They want their casino.
Um, yeah, Joel, I guess we'll just continue doing this until you're better and then we'll worry about getting our camera set up and that stuff later on when you're feeling, when you're safe, safe to come in here.
So far, no fever. I've been monitoring just, just cold symptoms, so I, I, I think I'm okay. But I'll just err on the side of the caution. If I can do work from home, I'll just keep on doing it from here.
Okay, that sounds good.
Safety is first.
Sounds good. Any other department heads out there? I think I got everybody. If not, does anybody have any other questions? I see the chat's working pretty good, so if anybody wants to speak up one more time, we'll leave that open to you. I'll take silence as lack of IT skills or no, so we'll move on in the meeting then to our supervisor's weekly report. Ken?
Nothing.
Mark?
I had a couple of meetings this week. The one I did in ten per, in person was down in Icoa. There was about, about eight of us in the room, so we were able to keep our social distance. And there was probably six or eight online. A lot of discussion was kind of the same we're having here right now about what to do with employees and, you know, headstarts and all that shutting down. You know, we're going to try to pay employees and do the things we need to do down there for that to continue on. And then I also had a, a phone-in meeting. It was, we could have attended in person at the Iowa Workforce Development. Our local, our current local board met. We had a full turnout for once, at least on the phone, so we were able to act. The discussion was on whether or not we could stay as our own region or join a larger region. And after quite a bit of discussion, it was just the dollars that they're going to allocate to us. We only get to use ten percent of our dollars for administrative type things. And it's, you know, that only gives us about thirty-five, thirty-six thousand to hire an administrator, a one-stop operator and, you know, a fiscal agent. So from counties down around Pope County, they're, they're in a five-region area. They can do it. Their dollars are a whole lot bigger. They're, they're, they are not hiring full-time people. They're hiring services, so they're not having to pay benefits, you know, through those services. But we just, after discussion, we decided that it's just too risky. I think it's, it's really not feasible, feasible, so we are going to go ahead and continue talks. Well, two of the re, two out of the three small regions have voted yes to join a larger region. So I think the second or third region was the day after our meeting here. So they have not heard. I have another phone meeting now scheduled. We could go to Waterloo, but I'll just probably phone it in or do Zoom. I'm not sure what it is. On Friday, which would be the, the upper three regions that are going to form a new region, are going to be discussing to see if we can make a court, E twenty-eight agreements we got to get in place. We got to get all kinds of stuff in place. They have extended our deadline, I guess, because of the virus a little bit, but we're going to try to keep pushing forward to get it done. That was, other than coming in on Friday for the, you know, the declaration. That was it.
Okay.
Good. I, I didn't have anything. Supposed to have one this week, but it's already been canceled, so. I didn't have nothing other than the, the last Friday declaration, so. I've got the Northwest Carrots. I'll be on teleconference tomorrow at one o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, um, any else that needs to be up for agenda next week? We'll just see where we get with those resolutions on the homestead stuff and wetland or slough, other than that.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know if other counties are doing it and maybe we can.
They are supposedly, but somebody should have a resolution and then we should copy or, you know, someone will follow code if I'm reading code right there.
Right, right. Yeah, we'll see, I guess.
Second part might be undoing the previous resolution too. It's possible there's something on the books that allowed this from years ago. I don't know.
I can look.
Okay.
Um, all right, I guess that's it. We'll, motion to adjourn?
So both. I will second.
Motion to adjourn and discussion. Are you in on the favor, I? Sorry, you got somebody on the phone, Joel?
AJ, did you want me to unmute all the lines just to see if there's any, anything from the public or are we just good to go?
We're good to go.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.